It's two o'clock, Colin, shall we make a start?
Yeah.
But before we start, Claire, I know you can see that you're here. Can I just check? Because this week's session's been recorded, but I guess it's more of a discussion. So I'm just wondering where where this might end up.
We're recording all of the sessions, but you know, whether or not they get used more widely kind of depends on how they go, I guess. Particularly for these network ones, we thought we would just record them as a kind of, you know, aid for you, really.
I was gonna say, because that's really helpful for us, isn't it, Colin? I think to have the
Yeah.
Kind of, you know, a copy of what we've just talked about, but I'm just making sure everybody's okay with that. Yeah.
So if everyone's all right with that. I'm not seeing any objections.
Yeah, no, sure, it's fine. Right. Colin, shall we start?
Yeah, I think we can. But you were gonna start, that's why I'm saying yes.
Right, okay. Well, welcome to the Higher Education Policy Network. But it's a meeting, it's a chance for us to tell you a little bit about the network. It's also a chance for you to talk to us about what you'd like from the network. And we're in that stage now of planning for the next academic year. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to have a discussion. It fits in with things that will be happening at the in-person conference as well. So I'll just introduce myself. I'm Karen Pamangas, and you will have known me as Karen Smith. I've recently moved to my married name. I'm at the University of Hertfordshire. I've been co-convening the Higher Education Network. I'm just trying to remember when, since 2014, I think. And then, not originally with Colin, Colin, you joined me in twenty twenty one, maybe?
Yeah, possibly twenty one or, yeah, is it twenty twenty one? Yeah, not very long anyway, but yeah. And this is, so definitely this will be the first time since we've gone back to the face-to-face conference.
So go on, Colin, do you want to introduce yourself as well then?
Oh, sorry, yeah, Colin McAig, I'm a professor of higher education policy. Most of my, Sheffield Hallam University, most of my work is around widening participation policy. And the policy of social injustice and the marketization and how marketization has impacted on on all those similar issues. In the last few years, most of my work's been in the postgraduate sort of field, so widening access to postgraduate research in particular. So I'm involved in one of those OFS Research England funded consortia projects, which are quite well-funded and large for over four-year periods. So really trying to get, in our case, more Black Asian Minority Ethnic students into postgraduate research, so addressing the, you know, the well-known sort of broken pipeline issues. But it's in principle, it's the same sort of work that we do in sort of widening participation undergrad, but it's it's extending the principles, but also the evaluation of it and how you can evaluate the effectiveness of interventions to make that make that work better. That's mainly the sort of work I'm involved in at the moment.
Okay, and I'm Professor of Higher Education and Professional Learning at University of Hertfordshire. And my work has been around interface of national policy with educational developers. I've done work there. Institutional policy development and I've done quite a bit of work on transnational education as well. So that's where we come from. I think unlike some of the other sessions that you've been in today, I have no problem at all at having cameras on so I can see you and see who's with us, if you feel comfortable to do that. Colin, I'm sure that's fine with you, is it?
Yeah, we could even ask people to say a little bit about, well, I've noticed Liz Moore's there, I know her slightly now. And I've seen Alex twice today. I know Rob fairly well. Did people want to say a little bit about what they do? Let's start with Alexander. I don't see him on his screen.
Sure, no, thank you, thank you. Happy to kick off, yeah. So a little bit, my background was in employability research, that's kind of how I became interested in that. And I did my PhD and then became a lecturer, senior lecturer at the University of Portsmouth. Then I actually jumped bizarrely into professional services and now I'm the graduate outcomes manager for the University of Portsmouth. So in essence, that means I submit the statutory returns required for the graduate outcome survey and analyze the data institutional level. And I'm involved in some of the evaluations of that. And then recently I've had an interest via the SRHE in the funding, they've given me for the simulation work, looking at the impacts and choices which they obviously make in terms of the B three progression metric and applying that. So that's where I came, I guess, coming to the higher education policy. And I'm also really interested, I guess, with a look to the future in the OFS's work around the consultation around sexual harassment. I think that's going to be really an important area that's going to come up in the year to come. So be interesting to hear what people's thoughts are on that and what we plan to do.
Adam?
Hi everyone, Adam Matthews, University of Birmingham. I work in the School of Education, but also across the university and a few other things. I work with Professor Chris Millwood, who's heavily involved in SRHE. My research is kind of the idea and purpose of the university, really. I'm interested in discourses and narratives. So as a plug for my, two of my sessions on Thursday at the in-person conference, I'm doing stuff with Vanessa Q from Birmingham City University, where we're looking at knowledge exchange framework statements. So looking at what people say in those. I won't give any spoiler alerts, but we're looking at sort of regional policy around knowledge exchange beyond teaching and research. So hopefully there's some interesting stuff to come out of that. And I'm also presenting with Debbie McVitty from One K G on political manifestos post-war, so UK political manifestos nineteen forty five to twenty nineteen. To look at how higher education and universities have been talked about with a kind of an eye to what's coming in twenty twenty four or early twenty twenty five.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that because I did my PhD on comparative manifestos as well, Labour and Tory manifesto sixty four to ninety seven. And we know Debbie quite well, Debbie's done a session for SRHE with us last year. Liz?
Hello, I'm Liz Moore. So I'm from Aston University. I'm a psychologist by background, but have interests in evaluation of education. Particularly where it applies to widening participation. So I presented this morning on learner analytics, but I've done stuff like scholarship research and looking at kind of access interventions as well. So anything to do with WP evaluation, I enjoy.
Tatiana? You mute, Tatiana?
Ah, okay. You can use the chat, Tatiana, it's fine. Yeah, yeah.
Camille?
Hi, I'm Camille Candaco-Housen. I'm at Imperial College London. So I'm quite interested in quality in higher education and metrics around quality, particularly around education, how we account for that. Done work with the OFS on sort of measures of learning gain, as well as kind of wider international work on how we measure student engagement and feed that into accreditation plans. I think it's quite interesting, I'm quite interested in this kind of policy intersection. And I guess I think one of the things I was quite interested in is how, what's the kind of chicken and egg of what we kind of research in relation to policy, how it gets funded? Whether it's just things people happen to be interested in, or whether it's something that actually gets strategic funding to sort of drive directions. And I was kind of it was interesting to hear Nicholas's standpoint on, you know, why aren't you guys researching lifelong learning? And I was like, well, where's the where was the kind of quick pot of research funding on lifelong learning that we were supposed to do that with? If that's something that you wanted versus we all just kind of sit around and then happen to pull lifelong learning out of our pockets and our sort of knowledge on it. So I guess there's some of that interesting intersections between not just purely what's funded, but sort of what's of interest and how we kind of do research on it, having done research that was you know, funded and had, you know, sort of government support, and then also seen what happened when that support was sort of taken away when political agendas changed elsewhere. So interesting to sort of pick that up with the network and society. Thanks.
No, it's true, isn't it? Without the funding, it's very difficult for us to do any kind of research. And unfortunately, government tends to call the tune. Unfortunately, a lot of the time, apart from Research Council type funding. Anyway, Panos?
Yes, hello, my name is Panos. I'm a PhD student at U Dortmund in Germany. I'm mainly interested on performance appraisal, performance assessment, mainly linked to academic staff. However, I had also quite a broad interview on policymaking, either for early career researchers and their inclusion to decision-making bodies, along with European Parliament higher education policies.
Thank you. Who else haven't we done? Obviously, Rob, Rob Carver is here.
Yeah, thanks, Colin. And just let me say, that last, the last event I came to that you organized was absolutely wonderful, absolutely brilliant. And the in-person thing with the, at the SRHE offices was great.
Yeah, it was.
What can I say? I've got a lifelong interest in policy, which means I've had a longer interest in policy than any of you lot, I think.
He's even older than me.
I still though managed to edit SRHE News and Blog, and I did a lot on widening participation a good while ago. More broadly interested now in having a go at government agencies like the Office for Students and the Ofqual. I've got a bit of, I've got a sideline in how unreliable A-level grades are. Which doesn't usually appear on the SRHE blog, I put it somewhere else usually.
Thank you.
So yeah, lots more to say, but I won't say anything, yeah.
We'd better call in Claire as our boss. CEO of SRHE currently.
Hi, yeah, as Colin kindly said, I'm the CEO of SRHE in post for about a year. Where we're currently finalizing the strategy for the next five years and policy engagement is what our role should be is a big part of that. So I'm interested to hear your views. I'm interested to hear what the network has planned for the next little while.
Thank you. Nikki?
Hello, I've put something in the chat, my internet keeps breaking a little bit. No, it's okay, I'm just, I keep dropping in and out. I'm staff at University of Derby, but I'm doing a PhD at the University of Sheffield. And I'm looking at kind of responsible use of student satisfaction measures and how useful they are and whether they work with all kinds of groups of people. I've just started, it's all very new.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Thank you.
Sounds like you need to be doing a session at SRHE. Anyway.
Hello, good evening from the Philippines and I think it's morning daytime in in the UK. I'm from the University of the Philippines, but I'm doing my PhD at Nagoya University and I'm looking at the free higher education policy of the Philippines and is interested to look at the experience of the United Kingdom. Considering the policy in England, for instance, free tuition and then going back and Scotland remaining into that policy area. So that's probably my main interest. Thank you. And a good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's everyone's introduction, so I suppose what we're really looking for from, interesting to hear what people are doing, but obviously we've got some there are obviously seminar sessions to be planning over the next couple of years. And I suppose it's about thinking about themes and individuals that are willing or their work is in the current enough state to be thinking, oh yeah, I could, I could do a slot. So is there any sort of major themes coming up that think might fill, might fill that, that function from anyone?
How about if I share this couple that we did the last year, you get a sense of what we've done, we've managed. I think one of the good things about COVID, one of, well, one good thing from COVID. Was our ability to, to work like this sometimes, maybe not all the time, that's less enjoyable, isn't it? But it's meant that moving, as we've returned back to doing the network events. We've maintained some online events and some face-to-face events as well. So I think that's enabled us to widen our, our audience and maintain engagement with some of our international colleagues as well. So in one of our sessions last year was looking at unequal expansion of higher education systems and institutional models in Latin America. So we had speakers from Argentina, Brazil, Chile, Peru, Uruguay. So that was really, really interesting overview of work that was being carried out there. And I think certainly at the time, we were saying that we wanted to follow that up and hear more as the research that they were doing was progressing. So that was one of our online events last year. And one of our face-to-face sessions last year was looking at the discourses of marketization, looking at critical perspectives, critical perspectives. And that was led by Steve Jones from Manchester University along with Colin. Colin gave his perspective as well. And that was our face-to-face session. So they were the two that we did last year. We've got one, which we hope we get in this year, but we didn't quite manage it. Ruth Squire will be doing a session early in the new year, looking at third sector involvement, access and participation. So yeah, they're just finalizing the information about that. So you should hear about that soon.
Yeah, I think Neil, Neil Harris is going to be the discussant for that. So he's, he's done some work on working the third sector as well. So hopefully find out this week, because I'm gonna I'm gonna nail Neil to the wall, get him to do his, give us a little bit more input so we can finalize that. I think that'll be in February, won't it?
Yep, early February.
Yeah. And I was gonna say that one that me and Steve Jones did, I think Debbie, Debbie McVitty was there, wasn't she?
Yeah.
Discussant for the, yeah, so that worked quite well as well. And the other one, I think that Rob was referring to, that was one Chris Millwood nice pull together that we did. The SRHE House. Or what was it called? Charity, but I can't remember the name. Yeah, you know, the headquarters. And that worked really well as well, didn't it? So, yeah, so if, you know, we usually get a good audience, I think having that London base really works as well. Attracting people to come to the face-to-face ones, whereas the online bit does allow us to be a bit more plural. And, and, you know, as well as international, because obviously difficult to get into and from any particular location.
Liz, I can see your hand down.
Yeah, I was just wondering, sorry, because I don't, if you'd just mind saying a bit more about the group, because I came because it looked interesting, but are you trying to obviously you're doing seminars and sharing good practice and stuff, but are you actually trying to influence policy ultimately? What's the purpose? What's the sort of overarching aim? Because I'm new to this, I just thought it looked interesting, I thought I'll come along. Not completely sure why I'm here.
Well, I would say that the Policy Network is a place to share good practice and to share research. But it's also, I mean, a lot of the sessions that we've described so far today have been that. So we've had researchers sharing their research in particular policy areas, but we've also had policymakers talking about policy areas. We have also in previous years run workshops around engagement with policymakers and how you can do that better. So I think that's where the network lies. Claire, I mean, I think this is also broader SRHE territory as well, which I think you were alluding to in your kind of introduction as well, that you know, there is the connection between the network, but there's also SRHE broader goals about policy influence.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm still learning about the networks and how they operate, but the events that I've gone to seem to, you know, in, in the sharing of research and people's research interests. The events seem to be really useful to stimulate discussion. And as far as the, the larger role of SRHE in influencing, we want to work with this network to determine how we might go about this. But I think that the ones the session that, that Rob was referring to, that you held last year, where you had policymakers and and researchers kind of interacting was, was really interesting and stimulating. So I think, Liz, the question, the, the answer is probably a little bit woefully on my part. But I think it really is a fantastic forum for discussion. And hopefully, moving forward, we'll be thinking more about how we might turn those discussions into, into action.
Great, okay. So I'm quite interested generally in trying to influence policy and I've gone about it various ways, but not always successfully.
I think, I suppose what unites the, the network really is academic research is the same as in all the other networks. But our particular theme is on policy research rather than perhaps, in my case, on political scientists and political economists. So I'm kind of looking at high-level policy, but others, you know, take more sociological approach and say that academic work is more focused on more individual parts of the system. Whereas, but I think we're all trying to change policy on, on some small level at least. But in addition to that, it's about raising profile. And, and thinking forward about policy options in the future, but as Camille really pointed out really well, it's really, really difficult. So why aren't you looking at X when there's no actual funding to look at X? If it's not commissioned by one arm of the state or another. And or if you can't persuade the research councils to fund the project. And but there are, you know, obviously generous but relatively small funding pots like from SRHE and Beera and so on. Otherwise, it's really difficult to generate data on policy research. But we have got a discussion on Thursday, which I did shamelessly plug earlier on. We're having a panel discussion on Thursday at the live event, where we're going to have, basically, the idea is to project forward a medium-term policy thinking, a medium-term thinking around about five years. I'm going to introduce it, but the main speaker is Smita Jandhar from Chase B Martino. His main role is liaison, liaising between institutions and the OFS on regulatory. So how, how to get around, how to work with the regulator or how to shape regulation. And of course, if there's a change in government, you might expect OFS to have slightly different priorities. But only if they were to completely rip down the market, there'd be no regulator. So I don't think that one's on the on anyone's agenda. But we really, hopefully that'll be, that's an hour where people can and talk about potential policy changes, which will then eventually lead to different research agendas being pushed forward. And who knows, you don't, you know, if there was a more left of centre government and the economic situation wasn't so bad, there might be more scope for saying, what can we really do about lifelong learning? What's really going to happen under life, the LLE entitlement funding? Is it really going to be just shifted funding in that way? And what's really going on with things like degree apprenticeships? Would a future government continue the the push towards that? And what's the research basis for, for that? So there are potential agendas coming up. What, what potentially is going to be done about HE finance in the long run? What, is it going to be in position of caps? And will that be evidenced? And what will be the impact of such caps? And these are the kind of issues I think are going to be coming up. But there's, there's probably other things I'm not even, not even on my radar, but it would be really good if anyone wants to chip into that session on Thursday.
We've still got a bit of time now as well. We've got three hands up, but I think they're in this order. I think it's Alex, then Rob, then Camille.
Okay, happy to go then. So I just wanted to offer a session really. So if you did want a session on looking at either the use of simulations, so looking at actually how to practically do a simulation to evaluate policy, or indeed, if you want, interested in perhaps around May time, when there is that release of sector-level graduate outcomes data, something around actually, well, what is the B three again? And what's it done last five years? Then I could happily run a session on that, attying with some of the research findings we've got, but also about some of the wider implications. Obviously, I think as I alluded to, we have had a number of kind of, I guess, reports released by the OFS on kind of, you know, how they've used the B three or not to look at certain regulations, certain universities. So happy to do something on that around that time of year. All right, cheers.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll be back in touch. Thank you. Rob?
Yeah, just to say, we're trying to crank up the blog to, to increase the impact if we can. Your, your seminar with, with the policymakers there, we did, that did actually one way or another generate a more recent blog by the former VC of Glamorgan, who, who was writing about financing fundamentally and pointing out some real problems about to loom over the horizon. And I've got another one out today or tomorrow, can't remember. Mike Shattuck has written about regionalism and, and re-engaging higher education with communities and, and that's coming out any day now. So that, that's just to say, anybody who wants to write for a blog, let me know. But I've already attended a number of sessions this morning, which might be relevant. And there was a very good paper from a guy called Patrick Shoy at Kansei University in Japan, which is about three, the three policies. And, and Nelson, if you, if you talked about the Philippines, that would make a nice Zoom seminar, there you go. Yeah.
Yes, I can, I can, I can join in. About the Philippine educational system.
Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, I'll make a note. Yeah. So I've been doing work with Philippines as well recently. So I think it'd be interesting to, to connect Nelson. And I'm just thinking, Rob, talking about the blog there, and I think, you know, if you're a presenter at one of our Higher Education Policy Networks, Rob will welcome a blog from you if you're a participant. He also likes to have the blogs as the response to the sessions as well. So yeah, I mean, do think about that if you're presenting or attending. Yeah. Camille?
Yeah, I guess two things. One is kind of, I'm sorry, Claire, you've heard a lot of these rants before. You know, how collectively within higher education, we try and raise some of the profile of a lot of the funding we used to get from HEFKE for sort of institutionally based projects or things that were sort of across the sector. I know I've sort of gone around the houses of UKRI trying to do things like, you know, how do we need to change engineering education in the UK? And, you know, it doesn't fit in any of the current funding schemes. It's obviously an area of national importance, but they kind of go, we've got boxes and if you don't fit in them. You know, and that's certainly not something the OFS, for example, would fund, but nor does UKRI see that as part of its remit. Unless you were, you know, in theory applying for, you know, a grant, looking, you know, just researching engineering education, but not in that kind of applied aspect of looking at something like national needs. So where are some of the funding that we, that used to be kind of HEFKE looking, you know, across institutions, big collaborations, things that met national agendas and whether SRHE could be part of sort of advocating for some of that that I think is really needed. Colin, some of the themes you mentioned earlier, you know, degree apprenticeships, lifelong learning, what does that look like at Sheffield Hallam compared to Imperial? You know, what are we talking about? You know, where it's kind of very much grounded in institutional context. I think we sort of need to raise that, because I think sometimes policymakers just don't know. And they just kind of go, I don't know why none of you are researching, why we want the, the stuff we want. And we, I think sometimes it's not that clear actually to them how the system works from the researcher's perspective. So that's kind of on the funding plate. And then I guess on topics, I've got a collaborative grant through the QAA exploring how institutions articulated educational gain and the latest TEF. And so that's work that's underway right now and, you know, would be ripe for sort of a summer presentation. We'll be doing some other dissemination, but sort of trying to explore, you know, what institutions say they're about. And how do they sort of articulate measuring that? And how does that fit with other measures? Because I've certainly had conversations with vice chancellors, for example, who kind of say, you know, the B three metrics have sort of turned into our KPIs as a university. And actually, I kind of think we're losing the heart and soul of what we're supposed to be doing by, you know, denigrating, you know, and they're kind of the people, and they're like, and I wrote that myself. And I think maybe actually I should put some more things about why we're doing what we're doing and what makes this institution special, which kind of integrates a little bit with that. So I think that could be an interesting session as well. Thanks.
That's excellent. That really is, yeah.
But I think even a workshop around funding sounds like it might be kind of a helpful session to have around, you know, where the funding comes from for our education policy work. And I think your earlier point, Camille, about what happens when that funding runs out? How does the research continue? I think that might be interesting alongside, you know, your, your content session as well. Yeah. I'm conscious of time because you've got parallel Yeah, I'm conscious of time because you've got parallel sessions to go off to now, haven't you? So maybe this is the beginning of a conversation. Um, Colin and I's details are on the SRHE, um, website. You'll find us in the Higher Education Policy Network pages. If you're at conference, um, at the end of the week, Colin is going to be around. Um, he's already talked about the session with Smita Jamdar on the seventh.
Yeah.
Three till four. Are you at the meet the SRHE network convener session as well, Colin?
Yes, I think I'll be there in time for that, is that on Wednesday? And I'm chairing a few, I'll, I'll be visible, you'll be out, pigeon on me if anyone wants.
We are, yeah, just do drop us an email and then.
It's encouraging, we've had some, there's some really good ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the network gets better, the more, the more that people come up with interesting ideas. But a session about, it'd be great to try and inform policymakers about, about the lack of funding. That might work well as a face-to-face one in London because they're more likely to attend if it being up the road. And, uh, they might, well, we'd be going, oh, yeah, that might be worth doing, but it's not, won't be too scary. But also the possibility of a change, a change of government, that will open up, uh, potential possibilities. Because after all, we're talking about relatively small pots of money to find, to fund really good research. It's not an expensive, uh, part of the, the landscape, is it?
No, thank you, thank you for coming along. Um, do get in touch and do enjoy the rest of your day online today.
Thanks, all.
Bye.
Bye. You want to stay on for a minute?
There's some good ideas there, right?
Yeah, I know, I can take your notes.
Notes, whether I can read it, I'm not sure. Oh, they're still recording, stop recording now, yeah.
Yeah, no, I was thinking.